Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the public hearing for Port Jefferson Crossing. Port Jefferson Commons, I'm sorry. Got the two names of the two projects confused. I'd just like to go over the ground rules for the public hearing. What we do and what we've always done here is have the applicant come up and present the project. This project has actually been progressing for the last two-plus years. So, the planning board is very familiar with it. We've had meetings with the applicant. This is a public hearing, which is a bit different because we're soliciting public comments at the hearing. So, the applicant's gonna basically talk about some of the highlights of the project, especially for people who are not familiar with it at all. So, the applicant will do a little bit of a backtrack and talk about the project history briefly and where we are to this point. After that, the board will have questions for the applicant. So, that's a dialogue between the board and the applicant. And what we're trying to do here is encourage that any comments get directed to the board. So, when the public comes up and speak, everybody speaks individually, and we ask you to just please keep the chatter down in the room so that we can hear the person at the mic. We'll determine how long a period of time. We have a lot of people here tonight. A lot of times, we'll just ask that the person, people who come up to speak restrict their comments to three minutes in the interest of not being here too long and getting everybody to register comments that wants to come up. Again, just to remind you, please fill out a speaker card. You can come up at any time over to Cindy Suarez during the hearing. Fill out a card. When we get to the public comment, Cindy will come up and give me the cards, and I'll call on people one by one. I'll say this now, when the first person comes up, you need to push the green button at the lectern there, and that'll have the mic on for the rest of the public comment period. But if you don't do that, I'll remind you. So, the applicant will present. The board will ask questions of the applicant. So, there'll be a dialogue back and forth between the board and the applicant. The staff will weigh in. Deirdre Ryan has prepared a staff memo on the project. We may have some comments and dialogue again with the applicant based on that memo that was recently prepared. So, that will all occur before we seek public comment. And again, I'll go to the speaker cards. People will come up one by one. Just a couple of rules we have here when the comments are made. Please be respectful of people speaking and try to keep the chatter in the room down. There may be some reaction to some of the questions. We just like to keep it, you know, keep it professional and have the people up at the lectern, whether they're pro or con, be able to speak and have their comments heard. I mentioned three minutes. If that's the case, three minutes doesn't sound like a long time, but it really, you can really say pretty much what you need to say in three minutes. We'll also be taking written comments. If you don't feel like you want to speak in front of a group or, you know, you feel like you'd rather react to what's said tonight and send in some written comments, they can be sent or dropped off at the planning department on North Country Road. And we'll take those into consideration to the same extent as we do as people get up and speak. So, it's, they're given an equal weight, so to speak. We ask that when you come up and make a comment, you address the board. If there's a question for the applicant, like someone may come up and say, "The applicant didn't tell us about, you know, the width of the building." And we'll say, "Okay. You have anything else to relay to the applicant? We'll relay it to the applicant. The applicant will talk to us, and we'll give it back to you." What this does is prevents a bit of a chaos, and some people get a little excited, and there might be some yelling back and forth, but we don't want that. So, we've been able to use these rules pretty effectively, and the hearings go pretty well, even if it's a controversial project. So, that being said, the first thing I want to say is Lou Bukowski, who's on the board, disappeared because he's on a team that's working on this project. So, it's a conflict of interest for him, so he's recused himself. So, he's actually gone. He won't, he's not even in the building anymore, which is the right thing to do in a case like this. I think that's all I have to say. Anybody from the board want to add anything? Or, okay. Kathleen, if you'd like to come up. When you come up, you will be sworn in. Kathleen's an attorney, so she doesn't need to be sworn in, and she can proceed immediately. So, just hit the green button, which you probably already did, and we can get going.
Excuse me, Ray. Would you like me to read it in?
Yeah, for the record, sure. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. Sorry. 1601-1607 Main Street, site development plan, application number 0645-23, Suffolk County tax map number, section 21, block 6, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. Zoning C2 commercial. Property owner is Conifer Realty. The applicant is Port Jefferson Commons LLC, member Conifer Realty LLC. Contact is Kathleen Deegan Dixon Esquire, Fortcelli Deegan Tirana LLP. Description is a proposed demolition and redevelopment of the site with a new 60,340-square-foot three-story mixed-use building. The proposed building consists of a 60-stall below-grade vehicle parking lot, first-floor non-residential tenant space, approximately 2,485 square feet, fronting Main Street, and 53 residential units on all three floors. Common areas will be dispersed throughout the proposed building. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Okay, Kathleen.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Deegan Dixon. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fortcelli Deegan Tirana, 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Uniondale, New York. I'm here on behalf of the owner and applicant of the Port Jefferson Commons project, as Ms. Suarez said, located at 1601 through 1607 Main Street and also 2 Perry Street here in the village of Port Jefferson, which that is, for anybody who's not familiar, is the southeast corner of Main Street and Perry Street. We're here this evening to propose a residential mixed-use building immediately to the north of the brand-new apartment building, which is known as Port Jefferson Crossing. That project was approved in November of 2020, and it's now fully built and occupied. This new building will complete the block front on the east side of Main Street between Station Street and Perry Street. The site presently, I have some pictures over there on the board, it consists of a dilapidated one-story block building and a three-story masonry with vinyl siding building. It's been vacant and has seen better days, I think people would say. What we're proposing is a workforce housing building with 100% of the apartments being affordable to people earning between 50% and 90% of the area median income. With the market rates in this area, the rents will actually be very close to what fair-market value rents are in the Upper Port Jefferson area. Just to put it into context, we're, with the Port Jefferson Crossing building, which I mentioned is 100% occupied, we found that the lottery there drew primarily from the local community. It were people who were first-time moving out of their parents' homes after they graduated from school, some people who were downsizing and moving, selling their homes and wanted to stay in the area, people like healthcare workers and firefighters and teachers and the like. We would expect the same demographic, although we found that with... That many of the applicants at Port Jefferson Crossing were actually ineligible because their incomes were higher. So, that's one of the considerations that went into making this a workforce housing building with little higher-level rent affordability. There's a very high demand for downtown apartment-style living for many ages and demographics. We're proposing a two-story, two stories of residential apartments over ground-floor retail with a lower-level parking lot, which will be accessible from the rear of the property. The proposal is for 53 units, 33 one-bedroom units, and 22-bedroom units with 2,484 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. We're also proposing 60 parking spaces in the parking lot, the parking garage at the rear of the, underneath the building. And the building will have a live-in superintendent. Before I go further, I just did want to introduce you to Roger Peney of Conifer Development. He'll just give you a little background on Conifer, some of their, the work that they do here on Long Island.
Can you hear me? We're very grateful for... Oh. I do. Thank you. We're very grateful for the opportunity to partner with the village and CDCLI, our partner, to revitalize Upper Port Jeff. You know, Conifer Realty, we are a full-service real estate company. We do development, construction, and property management. We have over 12 communities across Long Island with over 1,000 apartments. Again, we're committed to further investment in Upper Port, and, you know, we recently completed Port Jefferson Crossing, and again, that's 100% leased. We had over 2,000 applicants, and we have a waitlist of about 800 people. Again, we wanted to thank the planning board and staff for the collaborative process, and we've made every effort to address all the concerns that have been brought up, and we understand the importance of this development. So, thank you again.
So, Roger alluded to the collaborative process with the planning staff. It really has been a very fruitful relationship over the last approximately two and a half years. We first proposed the project in the fall of 2021, and we started discussions with the planning board and with the planning staff at that time. Different staff, but same objectives, to figure out what would best fit on this site and in, to be cohesive with the comprehensive plan for the Upper Port Jefferson area. The initial proposal was for a larger building. It was proposed to be 57 units with, in a four-story building with three floors of residential over a partial first floor of community space. We made several revisions over the last few years to reduce the height, to reduce the number of units, and to increase the commercial space. So, we're now at 53 units, as I mentioned, three stories, and then the commercial space on the ground floor is true commercial space, so that the entire block front on Main Street will be commercial. Even to the point where we moved the residential entrance to the building around the corner to Perry Street, so that there wouldn't be any interruption in the commercial streetscape. A grease trap was added to the plans to allow the possibility for a small restaurant or coffee shop in this area. We changed the unit mix to include fewer two-bedroom units, and then we added a service corridor connection for the commercial tenants as a commercial amenity to allow the commercial tenants to use the loading and freight elevator in the adjacent Port Jefferson Crossing building. They are different entities that own it, so we could not combine the two buildings. There was some talk about this being a Phase II project. That was really just sort of a colloquial use of that word. It's not a Phase II, but it's sort of a sister project. So, we've proposed an easement that will allow the perpetual use of that elevator and service corridor and loading area, so that the commercial uses in both buildings can utilize that amenity. We're proposing streetscape improvements along Perry Street to include new stamped concrete sidewalks and street trees. The village, I understand, has plans to reverse the direction of traffic on Perry Street. Currently, it runs from west to east, and I think the intention is for the village to reverse that flow to complete the loop with Station Street, which runs presently west to east. So, as you circle back around Oakland, I'm sorry, Highland. I'm just, Oakland, thank you. As you circle back around Oakland, you can come out on Perry Street, so you'll be heading back toward Main Street. The property is located in the C2 commercial district, and it is fully compliant with the zoning code. We did have a meeting with the zoning board at one point, a little over a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, just to clarify some questions on whether it was a three-story building because of the height at the lower point of Perry Street, but the zoning board did confirm that it is a three-story building and that it is compliant with the code. It complies with the setback requirements, height requirements, the floor area requirements. So, as I mentioned, fully compliant with the C2 commercial zoning district. The plan that's been submitted has been fully engineered by VHB Engineering. It conforms to the village's stormwater retention requirements, and we've been working with the planning department just to dot i's and cross t's regarding some of the technical issues regarding the site plan elements. The project requires 63 parking spaces for the residential use and nine for the proposed commercial space. We're proposing, as I mentioned, 60 spaces on-site, so we will require a payment in lieu of parking, or we will be required to make a payment in lieu of parking, to the village for 12 spaces. We, at the request of this board, submitted a parking utilization study in the Upper Port Jefferson area, including the Port Jefferson Crossing project, just to give comfort that the parking that's proposed will be more than sufficient to service all of the uses In addition to our 60 on-site parking spaces, there are 22 parking spaces along Perry Street, and then a parking, a village parking lot in the rear, which is to the east of the property, that is, at this point, very much underutilized. It's anticipated that much of the parking that's there, while available, will remain underutilized, and the basis of that is the parking utilization study that was done at Port Jefferson Crossing. There are 46 units in Port Jefferson Crossing, and there are 43 parking spaces there at the time of the study, which was over the course of weekdays. It was weekday and weekend parking when they expected the highest peak level of parking to be on-site for the residents and users of the building. The maximum number of parked cars was 20, so at any given time, there were at least 23 vacant parking spaces in that parking garage for Port Jefferson Crossing. And that's, I think, really bears testimony to the fact that these are designed as transit-oriented developments. The proximity to the railroad, designed to be mass-transit-friendly, and then also being workforce housing, many of the residents have one car. Very few residents have more than one car, and some don't have cars at all. They take advantage of the walkability of Upper Port and the railroad that's there to allow them to go to Stony Brook University and to get to other points along the railroad. The village's comprehensive plan recognizes the importance of putting the village's higher density near the train station. This property is located one block, or actually half a block, from the train station, and it satisfies the compliance objectives of providing transit-oriented and lower-cost apartments in this area, as well as beautifying the gateway to the village from the south. This project, we expect, will activate the upper part of the village with new commercial uses, and those uses will be supported by the new residents. As you bring in more residences, more businesses are attracted, which brings more foot traffic, which encourages more businesses to locate, and it becomes a symbiotic relationship that grows over time. So, we have, we have a lot of boards and a lot of information here. I think I've really described the project and the history. We have with us this evening Sal Coco of VHC Architects and Angelo Leno from VHB, who can answer any questions that you may have on the plans themselves. I also have Gwen O'Shea here from CDLI, Community Development of Long Island, who is the partner with Conifer in helping to lease and manage the apartments, both at Crossing and for Port Jefferson Commons. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay. First question, have you seen the ARC comments from the Architectural Review Committee, the village's architectural review committee?
Oh, and, thank you. We did have, we've had meetings with the ARC. The design that you see before you is a result of ARC comments. We met with them last about, about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. I don't know if there's more recent comments, but the design of the building was really informed by them. A lot of the colors and materials, the roof lines, the, in working with staff, we had foundation trees that were originally proposed along the Perry Street elevation, and it was determined that they would probably not be the best treatment for Perry Street, so they asked us to modify it with some architectural treatments and street trees. So, that's what you'll see here on Perry Street. We'll have to still go back to ARC, I believe, just to get their recommendation on that. But again, as with the planning department with the ARC, it has been an iterative process where our design professionals took a lot of, a lot of their suggestions, actually all of their suggestions, and incorporated them into the plan.
Okay. I thought there might, Deirdre, do you know if there are newer comments than that? Or... Okay.
The comments that I'm aware of were from December of 2022.
Okay. And... Yeah. All right. So, you should be, they should be current then. Okay.
Yes, that's the, December of 2022 is the last.
Okay.
So, actually, Deirdre, Laura over here, did the staff report that you prepared, did you share the comments that you have in here also with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So...
What you sent me today was not what you gave the board tonight. That was your comments from December 2nd. I emailed you back, but I haven't seen, I wasn't sure if there was actually a...
They're the same comments. There might be one or two little differences from the December 2nd memo anyways, but...
So, Mr. Chairman, staff still has a couple of issues that we want to go over with the ARC. So, staff's having conversations with ARC. We've included the applicant in those continuing discussions. We're requesting nothing official from the ARC, and that would be up to the board if you want to get any further advice from the board.
I think you've had a, I think those were comprehensive comments, if I recall. So, I think working, staff working with the ARC is fine. I don't know if any board members have any, anything different on it.
And the comments that I was talking about were staff comments, right? The ones that we just looked at about the apartment size.
Yeah.
Those are, for the most part, they're comments that they are aware of. We did meet with them last week, I believe.
Yes.
And it was just, my staff report is just maybe reiterating those same comments.
Okay.
Maybe one or two comments were brought up, but...
Did we get revised drawings with the detailed dimensions?
No, because that meeting was only last week, so there was no update from that.
Okay.
So, I mean, we had some comments about the size of the apartments, the actual units, the one-bedroom and two-bedroom sizes according to code, if I believe. So, I don't, I don't know if those have been addressed yet, or you have any thoughts on those, or...
Yeah, please.
It's very close. We've asked the applicant to give us to some, to scale representations of the units.
Okay.
So, we can get the dimensions, we can measure it out, we can put that together.
Okay. So, it's, you're closing in on that?
Closing.
Okay. All right. So, substantially, the comments haven't changed, a couple of minor tweaks, I guess, what you want to say.
And we do feel confident that once, once we sit down with planning, that they'll find that our apartments do conform to the code.
Okay.
The size.
So, we've seen, we had, I don't know if, have we seen the parking, when was the parking utilization study done, do you know?
It was submitted in December. It was submitted as part of our December comment response letter. Let me just find the date of that.
This past December, right?
Yeah, December 20th.
Okay.
Was the parking utilization study. So, that was addressed to the planning director, and...
Okay.
I have an additional copy, if you want me to submit it. And then, also speaking of submissions, I also have a letter of support from the Port Jefferson Business Improvement District.
Okay.
That, I've submitted a copy to Ms. Suarez, but I have copies here for the board members as well.
Okay. Very good.
Date, January 10th, 2024.
While you're handing those out, any board members want to see anything else before we go to public comment? Anything else we should display or talk about, possibly give the public more information before we entertain comments? Those are, those are nice renderings of the, how the building would look. We talked about parking. We talked about, the grease trap is now inside the building. We talked about improvements along Perry, Perry Street. Anybody else have anything, any other questions, want to see anything before we...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a correction, the grease trap is not inside the building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's currently, it's still proposed to be on the sidewalk on Perry Street side.
Okay. All right. Guess we'll open it to public comment at this point. Cindy, if you want to give me the speaker card that you have?
Ray, did you want this marked as Exhibit A?
You can do that, yeah. Yeah.
Deirdre will bring you the speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, again, we have speaker cards. We'll hear, hear from, and it won't be, there's only two speakers that have signed up. So, last chance to, see, we have another coming up. So, while that's, while that's happening, again, if you want to send in written comments, send them to the planning department on North Country Road, or you can drop them off there. We're gonna, because we have a lot of information here to get through, and things are ongoing in terms of staff review of the project, most likely, we'll be adjourning this hearing to next month for continuation, a reaction to some of the comments we have tonight and other things that were said, and other unresolved issues that are, seem to be working toward resolution between planning department staff and the applicant. So, at this point, and I'd like to call up the first speaker, it's Barbara Ransom. Barbara, just make sure that green light's on, and they're gonna swear you in. I'm sure you're used to that.
Yes. Right hand.
Okay.
I affirm. Barbara Ransom, 409 East Broadway, Port Jefferson. I'm here representing the Port Jefferson Chamber of Commerce, which I'd love to comment on a formal letter possibly, and also as a resident. So, I'm, I've gone by these new apartments now for weeks on end, and they say that they're 100% occupied, but my, one of my questions is, are they actually people living in those apartments? Because the lights are never on, it's very dark, I see extraordinarily very little activity, the parking lot is like never full, and so I'm, I'm just wondering, when you say, when the applicant says 100% occupancy, but are they actually occupied? So, that would be one question. The other big concern from a chamber's perspective is that the apartments are done, and I'd like to know, what is the forward status on getting proper tenants on that lower level? Those are vacant stores. They talk about revitalizing Upper Port Jefferson, but yet I don't see any activity of any retail or commercial... Port Jefferson, but yet I don't see any activity of any retail or commercial activity going into those. And so, you already have one section of these apartments with no commercial development on the lower level. You're about to go into maybe the sister property, which is going to be expanding more retail, commercial development. I was also with the understanding that, and I need to be clarified, that the, there is a management firm that's separate from Conifer that takes care of the commercial management and the rentals of the retail portions of these projects. So, very concerned about what's happening, what aggressive actions are being taken place to try to find commercial tenants. And in that same vein, right up the block, you're going to have 285 new apartments that are going to go up. It's going to be a long process with a staller project. And I'm just wondering, all those current businesses there are going to be vacant, or they have to leave. Some of them have already left now. You've got sales closing and so forth. Has the applicant reached out to any of those potential retailers, businesses that might want to move to these new locations? I was very, very happy to hear about a grease trap, which implies that that could be a restaurant. And I know you got that little coffee shop up there. I don't know what's going to happen to the coffee shop, you know? So are they aggressively looking at situations that are changing? So those are some concerns from a commerce perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Kathleen, if you want to have somebody come up, then maybe you can take us there, but answering those questions?
Sure. I'll take the first crack at it. So, the first question, are there people living there? Yes, they are. I guess they're quiet, and, but it is 100% occupied, and the apartments are actually being lived in. I think a lot of people go to work and, and come back, and I don't, I don't know beyond that, how else to respond, but-
Okay. Before you go on to the next one?
Yeah.
I just have a question. Matt, since this is workforce housing, and I guess the first building was-
The first building was for, between 30 and 90, and 95% AMI. This one will be between 50 and 90.
Okay. So I guess there's some income requirements to qualify for, to be able to lease, lease an apartment. Is there anything preventing subleasing an apartment that's in the, in the rental agreement?
Yes, there is. Gwen, do you want to, do you want to address anything, or?
Sure.
So Gwen O'Shea from CDLI.
Okay. Gwen, you'll need to get sworn in if you're not in this hearing.
I'm not. I do. Thank you. So just to piggyback on, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to, to be here with you all this evening, to piggyback on some of the information that Kathleen was sharing, in particular about the tenants and occupancy. It is an individual's main residence, that is a requirement, but as Kathleen noted in her earlier comments, there's great diversity in representation of individuals in those units, where they may be working, whether they work night hours or day hours. So there certainly is, you know, differences in terms of when the units are occupied. This development, as the second phase, one of the key pieces that was noted in the lottery, as Roger noted, there was over 2,000 applications that have been received. Many individuals were over income, and so in response to that, there was an increase in the number of units that are at the 90% AMI threshold. Just to give you some context, that's about $92,000 for a household size of one. So we've added the number of units that can go up to that income. And as we all know, affordability is relative, right? So the, the intention here is to ensure that tenants are able to afford the rental payments, which again, in the current building range, anywhere from about $800 to over $3,000, depending on which income category you fall into. But ideally, we're looking to ensure that the tenant is not paying more than 30% of their income towards rent, so the rest of those funds can be used either to save or be used as disposable income spent within the downtown area.
Okay.
Oh, yes. And I think, I'm sorry, to answer your question about subletting, it is not allowable. That is noted in the lease, and that would be an infraction and potential movement for eviction if someone was attempting to sublet their apartment.
Okay.
While you're still there, Ray?
Yeah. Go ahead.
This is the first time that I've heard that Port Jeff Commons will have a live-in superintendent. Is there a live-in superintendent currently?
There is not a live-in superintendent at the existing building. There are two full-time employees and one part-time employee that are onsite, but there will be a live-in superintendent in the, in the second development.
And is the intention of that live-in superintendent to make sure that people are abiding by their lease agreements?
So the, a lot of the lease agreements is really managed by property management, which are the two full-time individuals there. The superintendent in the second development will be maintaining sort of quality of life and adherence to standards within both buildings.
Good. Kathleen, do, do you remember if you've got IDA funding for, for the first project, and, and also designated for the second?
We, we did, yes, and I think we will also for this one as well.
Okay.
There's many different funding sources and many different, you know, it's a, it's a true public-private partnership from everything, from New York State, Town of Brookhaven, Village of Port Jefferson. It's a, it's a real good collaborative project.
Okay.
Just to answer Ms. Ransom's other questions, excuse me, about the commercial space, excuse me one sec, sorry. The commercial space in Port Jefferson Crossing, because of the structure of that transaction with the property owner who sold the property to Conifer, that property owner is the master tenant of the commercial space. So Conifer has no control over the leasing of that space. We're, we're trying to work with him to, to encourage him to be, he, from what we understand, he was working with two different prospective tenants, a coffee shop and a, a hair salon. We haven't gotten an update in a while, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get one for you tonight. The new project, the second project, does not have that arrangement. Conifer will be, will be responsible for, for the leasing of that space, and we can give you a commitment that they will be very proactive to do so. The, the other space, the Crossing also does have a grease trap, so, to give the, to give some flexibility, so that if there is an opportunity for, for a small restaurant or bakery, or, or something that has a food use, that they'd be able to, to do that. We were, in discussions with planning staff, we've been brainstorming about ways to activate that space, that empty space in, in Conifer Crossing. And we, we've been talking about doing some temporary, until we get commercial paying tenants. One of the things that, that was discussed was possibly having a community outreach office there, so that people can come in and see pictures, see what the apartments are like, and then possibly find out about the lottery and how they, how they can qualify. So that would be something that local residents can see and avail themselves of. It'll also give a little action there, so that as you walk by, it's not going to look like a vacant tenant space. We're also trying to come up with other creative ideas until that, until that space can be commercially leased. But we, we understand the concern, and it's something that we take very seriously, and we will commit to work with.
I don't quite understand the situation on the first building.
Barbara, if you address us, we'll, we'll relay. That's what we do.
I don't understand the management situation for the first building, a sparse leasing and commercial property.
Okay.
I don't understand the arrangement that you mentioned.
Yeah. I mean, I heard the description too. I mean, I, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, or?
I can, I can try, I can, um-
Yeah, I just, I just, so that, I guess there's no control, then the applicant has the choice, that person's managing that commercial space? Is that what I'm understanding?
There's a master tenant who-
Master tenant.
Master tenant. So, well, in a, in a project that, in, in a different type of project, it could have been condoed out, where, where the commercial space was separate from the residential. In this instance, the seller of the property wanted to control the commercial aspect of the site, and that was part of the deal. In order to get the building built and to buy it, we needed to commit to that to him. I don't know the details of that.
Can I just weigh in on this?
Yeah.
Jack Marley, who originally owned the building, he sold it to a man who, I wish I could remember his name, but he is part of the Gold Coast team that do the movies on, down in Bethpage. He was in over his head, never built before. And when Jack sold him the building, and again, I wish I could remember this guy's name, he took the bottom, the retail space, didn't know how to approach the apartments up there, and went into an agreement with Conifer. And for the people in the audience, the reason why I know about this is, I own Port Jeff Army Navy across the street, and when I say I lived uptown all my life, I'm being literal, because my dad was the pharmacist at Wayland's Drugs in 1958. So, Jack and I had a good relationship, and this is what he told me. The guy who bought the building actually came into my store and wanted to buy our building. Glad I didn't do it. So, does that put any kind of light on it?
I'll talk to you later.
[laughing]
I have a lot more questions that I don't want to waste any of this.
But I do think your suggestion about reaching out to the tenants who are going to be displaced, we'll, we'll definitely look into that. And if you have a card from your chamber, we, we can, we can be in touch. Maybe you can help us with the, with the outreach.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next speaker is Karen Sullivan. If you want to come up and get sworn in.
I do. Karen Sullivan. Good evening. So, some of my questions were actually answered organically, which was wonderful. So, my two other questions are just about security, what the plans are with the applicant as far as outdoor lighting and cameras outside for security on the building. And obviously, you said that there will be a superintendent on premises. Will the superintendent be there 24/7, or is it only during normal business hours? And then my last and final question is about, how much in dollars will be going back to the village once this building comes online for our tax roll for the village? So that's my last question. Thank you.
If I could weigh in just a little bit, I'm, I'm wondering, Karen, if Karen was, or Ms. Sullivan, was referring to the fact that some, some buildings that have been built previously in the village have had glide paths, or however you want to call it, where they start at a very low rate, and they progressively go up. Is that part of?
Yeah. Can I address you from here, or you want me to go back?
Come on up, because those people who are watching can hear you.
Sure. Absolutely. So, as we all know, all of us that have lived in the village for a while, when the shipyard was going up, that, like, to Ms. Zimmer, Ms. Zimmerman's point, that was incrementally kind of going up. And eventually, from what I can recall and remember, they were going to be coming onto the tax roll, but not for several years because of all the breaks and deals and things that they worked out with the state and the Town of Brookhaven. So, someone in the back had just said that they don't really know what that's going to be yet, but that's kind of unsettling to me as a resident, because I would hope that we have some kind of a ballpark idea of the advantages that we're going to get from a, from a tax perspective for the village. And I realize these are rentals. You know, if they were actual condos, that's a whole different ballgame, and we would be getting a lot more money into the tax bucket for the village. But I'm just kind of curious what that's going to look like. And my other question, now that I'm thinking about it, is the first phase of the building, are there any children living in there? And have we seen an influx of children coming into the district with some of the apartments? Because we're, we have very, very low enrollments, and we need more kids in our school district, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll see before, just one comment. This building is in the Compswog District, which extends down to Sheep pasture and North Country Road. So it's a couple blocks inside that district.
That's okay.
School-wise, anyway. Andy, you want to?
No.
So if I could just address the question, I think what Ms. Sullivan was asking about were payments in lieu of taxes, which is something that is usually done through a negotiation with the Industrial Development Agency. In this instance, it'll be the Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency. Almost every commercial project that's not strictly retail tends to avail itself to payments in lieu of taxes. So, I'm happy to have a chance to actually explain this, because there's such a misunderstanding about what that, what they're all about. Essentially, you start, the baseline is what, what the property is paying now. It will never go below what the property is paying now. What, what the negotiation with the IDA does is that it allows the new taxes to phase in over a period of time. It's usually 10, 12, 15 years. Sometimes for really transformative projects, they'll, they'll be longer. In this instance, I wouldn't expect it to be much longer than 15 years before it is paying, before it comes out of the IDA and then is paying full assessed value. But the, every year it will pay more, and I'm not, I'm not the, doing the IDA application, so I don't even know what's been proposed. But it will always be more than what's being paid now, and it will continually increase until it's at full, at the full assessment. So, I, I hope that answers the question about, the village is definitely, certainly not going to lose any money on it. It just will be allowing the building to ramp up, allowing construction to, so that you're not paying full taxes immediately upon putting a shovel in the ground, and it allows the, for the economic viability of the project. I don't know the answer about whether there's any children in the school district. I'm not sure if we can, we can get that information for the board. And then as far as security, we do have this, the, the 24-hour superintendent. You know, the intention is for security and cleanliness and maintenance, and I, I don't think we have an outdoor lighting plan that's proposed. We're, really, we're relying on the streetlights and, and what's, what's already there. If the board feels that there's something more warranted, certainly we're, we're happy to consider it. The, oh, one thing I neglected to mention, and I don't know if you noticed it in the, in the renderings, but we do have an outdoor recreation space in the building for the benefit of the tenants, tenants only. It's adjacent to the great room on the third floor, and it gives residents a place to be outside. It actually has a water view, which, maybe just a winter water view, I'm not sure. But it's, it's actually a very nice tenant amenity that also, I think, for safety purposes, if somebody is going to, you know, go outside to get a breath of fresh air, they'll be, they'll be up on the, on the third level. And that was, we, we had it in various places throughout the, the project over the, over the many, many months. And this is a place that I think staff and the board felt was a, was a good location for it.
All right. Thanks. Roger?
Just, Roger, Roger. Just wanted to add a couple of things. So just to clarify, the, the super, the 24-hour super is a live-in super. So that, that super will have a unit. Currently in Crossing, we do have a security camera plan, and we will have cameras on commons. Safety is our number one priority, and if, if lighting is an issue, our property management team takes safety very seriously, and we, we will address the, those concerns. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next speaker, Roger Corcelli.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and your services.
Roger.
Roger Corcella, 106 South Street. Roger Corcella?
Should I tell you, Roger?
Yes. Well, I'd like to know more- What I'd like to know more about is Perry Street. What is the responsibility of the developer for Perry Street? Because when you have a building there, you have to demo. There are a lot of problems on that street that's going to be disturbed, and since you're putting in sidewalks and curbs, I'd like to know what is their responsibility for that road, to repair it? Because we, as taxpayers, don't wanna pick up their responsibility.
Right. As with any plan like that, that's putting sidewalks in, they'll be responsible for making or restoring what's, anything that's disturbed to install the sidewalks and curb.
And how about the pavement and all?
Pavement would be included. If they need to excavate the pavement and saw cut it, they'd need to, you know, replace the pavement that's disturbed.
And we have them possibly, being part of their site plans, this Perry Street, is to have them do the road, pave it all, just besides saw cutting?
Well, it depends on the condition of the roadway primarily, I would think. You know, if it's really badly deteriorated at this point, you know, that would make sense. You have a new project, the road should be repaired if you're working on it.
Well, repaired is one thing. Saw cutting the road is one thing, and doing the road over is another thing.
Yeah, I think...
So, that's why I'm saying, if it's possible, part of their project is to have the road completely done, since it's part of their project as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's really unreasonable thing to ask the developer to put that in part of their scope of work.
Yeah, the Public Works Department is gonna review the plan, so I don't know if there's anything we wanna add to that. We're gonna be adding a staging plan as well, construction staging plan.
So, can we put a stipulation in there after we review it? This is what we need to do? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, it's an ongoing process, and, you're welcome. And just to add on to that, we talked, there was a comment maybe before, that the Perry Street would be reversed. That would be the responsibility of potentially this developer and the one across the street to the north, because those are the two that really need to, you know, share in the evolution or reversing the flow of Perry, which would involve a traffic signal on Main Street to get out onto Main Street. And we talked about that alleviating some of the traffic at coming down Oakland Avenue, or having some traffic come down Oakland Avenue instead of trying to make a left from Sheep pasture road onto southbound Main Street. So, that's something we kicked around, the idea of having the applicant post a bond. This applicant posts a bond for a certain period of time. The other development doesn't materialize, then that will have to go away until that other developer comes in.
Has the state made any comments on this at all?
I don't know if we've gotten any specific comments from DOT yet.
Has the state been approached on it at all, to have some comments that they may have?
Yeah.
They did comment. No, they did not.
Not yet.
No, okay, not yet, but it has been presented. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, next up is Paul Saglioka. I hope I pronounced that right. And you'll get sworn in by Jen.
Yes, I do. Paul Saglioka, 84 Lincoln Avenue, Port Jeff Station. We're with the Friends of Lincoln Avenue. My office is at 640 Belter Road in Port Jefferson, and I just wanted to address the vehicle traffic. I usually go to my office 5:00, 5:30 in the morning. A lot of the cars are parked out in front of the Omni Navy Store, so I'm assuming it's from the Conifer One. And for them to talk about TOD and how you can get to Stony Brook, my daughter works at Stony Brook as a registered nurse, there is no way she's gonna get off at Stony Brook train station and walk to the hospital. So, I have no idea why we're talking about professionals, you know, basically taking the train to work at the hospital. Can anybody address this?
I have several friends who drive buses for Stony Brook, and they pick up at the train station and take people throughout the campuses.
So, my daughter works 7:00 to 7:00. She works 7:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning. There's buses that are gonna be waiting and train schedules, instead of her just having a car and driving 10 minutes down the road. I don't see that as a feasible, you know, alternative. She could be taking, it could be an hour and a half to get to Stony Brook Hospital.
That could be quite true by the time the buses, but there are multiple buses.
It's rather silly.
Yeah.
So, for having one parking spot per unit is what I'm hearing, basically 55 units, 60 parking spots, everybody's gonna be parking out on the street over there. I already see it. I see it every morning when I go to work.
Well, you also have...
Nobody wants to park inside the building when they can just park outside and get in their car and already going down. And basically, what I'm concerned about is they're gonna be cutting through the back area when 112 is a parking lot, like we see a lot of times, coming north and south. So, what are they gonna do? They're gonna go down Wilson, they're gonna go down Dayton, they're gonna go down Cherub, and they're gonna cut through the back parking lot. So, we're really concerned about, you know, the representative of the fact that people are gonna take the train everywhere. So, I just don't, I just don't see it. Let me finish. I just don't see it. The other question I have, has Compsog School District been notified regarding, you know, the second development? Has anybody notified the district, or do they...
They've been notified through SECR also?
I have sent a public notice to Compsog School District yesterday, and I called them to make sure they received it.
Thank you.
I just wanna make one comment. Please keep in mind that on the west side of Main Street, there are apartments above those buildings also. So, what you might be seeing, the cars parked there are the people that live above those buildings.
Okay. I've never seen it that way before, but now I'm seeing it, so.
Like I said, I used to work there.
At 5:00 in the morning, I didn't see it until this building was built. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wanna speak?
Okay, that being said, I believe we'll take a motion to, not necessarily close the public hearing, but we'll adjourn it to next month, which is February 15th is our next meeting. And again, any comments based on, you know, your review or your information that you were provided with tonight about the project? Written comments can be dropped off at the Planning Department or mailed to the Planning Department, ideally before the next public meeting, so we have all those and we can have them addressed as well.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a request that you keep the record open for written comments, but that the public hearing be closed so that at the next meeting, you can move forward with the application. We just, being two and a half years into this, we're really looking to keep things moving along, and I think it still gives the public ample opportunity to provide their comments. I know this is being livestreamed and recorded, so anybody who's not physically here, or even those who are, can go back and view it and formulate their thoughts. That would be my request, please.
Okay. All right. Can staff weigh in on that request? I think there are a lot of loose ends, yeah. Okay. All right, thanks. That being said, can I get a motion to adjourn? Anybody have any comment on that, whether we should adjourn or close?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, to adjourn until February 15th.
Yeah. Can I get a second?
A second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, very much for participating and listening intently, and for the responses that were given by the applicant as well.